Your training.
All right, now I'll move it for you.
All right, we have a motion to approve the agenda. Motion from Gerald and second from Randall. No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? All right, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from fourth line?
So moved.
Second.
Either one.
Go, Craig Mark.
All right, discussion? All right, all in favor? Any opposed or abstained? All right, do we have any public comments on agenda items? None? Keep moving. Hold business. Got an edit to the special event permit for Hartford Downtown Market. Call it.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the city. Yeah, so I realized in this last couple months of planning that I actually did forget the last time I was here to ask for usage of the city's tables for each of our markets, and my ask was also to waive the fee for those tables just like last year. It helps your decision any, the city could end up with more tables than we borrowed last year. I don't think so far I was too happy about it, but you know, we got your back.
Yeah, there were a lot of things in that special event permit. I would imagine we just need a motion to approve the edit to the special event permit. Do we have any motions?
Yeah.
Second. Any discussion?
Did we do anything with the deposit, no? You weigh the fee but not the...
Not sure we weigh the fee and the deposit.
And the deposit.
Yeah, so I mean, we're saying we need to share. Obviously, they get the deposit back if they put it down. That's just for covering in case something happens to a table and we have to do any repairs on them. If they come back and everything's done with them, like, we didn't even cash the checks, we just give them back to them, so.
And we got extra tables.
I'm sad.
Yeah, we did return it, yeah. We gave it back to them.
I was gonna say, there's only two of them out there. I think we got to save them for next year.
No, Deanna reached out, she's like, "Take one of our tables." And I was like, "You're saying we were just counting it today?"
Want to use the sit-out front?
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion? All right, a vote? O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you. Just for reference to Teresa, Chris Schilling and Shannon Melikin, those are my table guys, so they'll come to retrieve the key and return it each month. June 3rd is the first market, so please come on out.
Anything else coming up? Thank you, thanks, Ellen. All right, next item we got is review or approve the ISG proposal for our community development plan. We took a look at it, as I said, our last meeting, and now we've got it on here to take a closer look at, so.
Yeah, maybe if you guys have any questions on that particular proposal. Actually, Steve wasn't here last time because he was talking to the community on the feasibility study, and he's there again tonight, so he wasn't able to join. But if you have any questions on the plan, I'd be happy to answer any, anything as you have the...
I don't have any questions on it. I've reviewed it a couple different times.
I'm a little concerned about the price. Because if I'm not mistaken, I don't know if I was here at that meeting or not, but I... Do I recall a $75 an hour can?
That...
Is that on force account work?
That's just on force account work. Yep, yep, correct. Good, correct decision, for sure.
Because at that rate, that'd be 830 pounds.
Yeah.
Exchange a little extra.
I get that. It is a really heavy lift, and the heavy lift component, too, is we're gonna have quite a lot of community engagement meetings. I think we have, I think four that are planned as part of this, where we get the input, then we actually review concepts, and then we actually lay out the plan, and then we eventually adopt that plan. And typically, when we're having those, we need about four facilitators that are at those. So then, there's enough that you can have groups, you can actually have discussions about each particular item, that being the three that we're focusing on. Some of it is the vision and goals, dividing properties, but a big component is that commercial industrial development, and then the housing, I think the third one, that was the quality of place. So there'll be quite a few folks that will actually be attending those. It's quite a lot to prepare and actually get to see.
This isn't much for you, David, but for the council and David, for Travis and Mark, for the Vision 2025, I wonder if this is something we can make an ask in Vision 2025 for some of this funding, so the city shares that with them, since the industrial part component is so crucial to their mission.
Yeah, they've been discussed a little bit at our meeting last week. I touched base with Justin Icke today to see if, you know, if his appetite is still, you know, with the HADF, with the Vision 2025 campaign kicking through their hand towards this, and they said that they would feel like it's part of the vision of the Vision 2025 to know what the strategic plan for Hartford is. And so that helps lighten the burden a bit. Some could say you're taking some change out of your left pocket and putting it in your right, but still, the dollars are there, the help of the E8, so that 62.5, even if the city pays for the whole thing in the HADF for Vision 2025, that's a check back, however...
However, the...
Should be.
Should be, should it? I mean, that's really a, I mean, they're quasi committed to that management of the city, right? Shouldn't be the issues of that. But that would, from the cit... I agree with Mark. I guess that was my first thought, that kind of, you know, I knew it was going to be expensive, don't get me wrong, I knew it was gonna cost us some money, but I didn't know what the figure was gonna be. That would make it a lot more palatable, I think, both from the city's standpoint, and it really helps the HADF and the Vision 2025 committee on their mission.
There's some value in it, for sure. I don't know.
But I would say, with that in mind, I would say we would, we would need to approve it here, and then we'll have that discussion further and kind of iron out those details. Would be my approach.
Hypothetically, how does it steer the community in ultimately, because in my mind, the Seabirdings are here, and when the Seabirdings brought their vision, it's residential, it just well could have been community commercial, it could have been light industry, it could have been whatever they wanted to do.
Yeah.
And the city would have said, "Bring it." The same with the Costello's properties, whatever they wanted to do, we would have said, "Bring it." So I'm wondering hypothetically, what's it look like up on the highway, cornfield? Whoever owns that, they say, so let's say this is done, and we pull whatever label on it we want to put on it, and they say, "We want to come in, and it doesn't match what we have in this plan." Where, how do you, where do you go with that?
Yeah.
Because you're certain, I don't think, I don't think anybody would tell them, "No, if you want to bring in 48 acres into the city limits."
Can I jump in? Can I jump in? Wasn't there 40 acres that wanted to be brought into the city limits, was to the sports complex that had swales and all this other stuff?
But that was, that wasn't necessarily the zoning, though, that was the design. That wasn't the zoning, the zoning was never an issue. That was the design was the issue.
Gotcha.
If that were then 40 acres of residential by our ordinances, that 40 would have come in so fast, it'd make your head spin. They wanted to get away from all the city ordinances, but the zoning was never an issue up there.
We're not talking about rezoning of this proposal.
No.
We're creating a guild blueprint ability committee, like, this is what we want, or things would be good, and the acres, whatever you're gonna talk about, change their mind, then we change the blueprint, and the vision, I think is how I do.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think they may tell you, but well, I guess we can tell them what they have zoned, and that we don't like what we're seeing, but we can do that without a plan, too.
Agreed. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, a lot of it is the community telling, coming to consensus in regards to what they want to see where. Does that mean that it's exactly gonna be that? And with the one thing that we can guarantee is it won't actually exactly be that way, but I think a lot of that does, and I think it does really tie in on your initiative, but then you're gonna find that there's gonna be a lot of actual projects that come out of it. So it's not just one fuzzy document that we're gonna put together, this is actually gonna be things they're gonna see. So you're gonna see projects, you're gonna see inspiration, and you go, "Oh, okay, I can picture that there." Does that instantly mean that there's a project that comes from it, I don't know? But there's plenty that'll be laid out in that plan, but every once in a while, something changes, passes, like, for sure.
My whole deal with, my whole deal when we first started this discussion was, do we have an idea, or have we had any discussion long-term? What do we want, what do we want to see in 10 years? And that was what really drove my comment, even the first, when I first brought it up, really kind of based on what the downtown Hartford was doing. They're looking, what do they want to do in the next five to 10 years? I think as a city, we need to be doing. I'm as excited, excuse me, about the marketing or finding out what our, what do we need to be doing for branding or marketing for a city? Where do we need to be to make this thing drop? I mean, that's kind of what I'm, that was my vision, if you will, when this whole deal kind of started.
I think it allows an opportunity to market a community. We're not really sure what that 48 acres of cornfield's ever gonna be.
Right.
If you want to make an investment up there, good luck.
Yeah. We hope we like it.
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully the next city also has the same vision, and they have some stuff that works with that.
I also envision this as a piece that could be hooked onto an email or sent to a, sent to a prospect or somebody that's looking to make an interest or use it as a marketing tool in Minnesota so we can draw more people over here. Wait. Cop it out.
No, that's perfect.
I should have called out the state. Go ahead.
Well, and having a plan instead, down the road piecemealing things together, which is never good.
Yeah.
You know, and like you say, it's not really in stone necessarily, but it's thoughts, ideas, inspiration.
In that way, if something does come in that's different than what you have here, at least it's a, at least it's a pause to say, "Okay, well, wait a minute, that isn't what we, that's not what we had here."
Yep.
Gives us a little bit of a roadmap to say, "Should we pause on this one, or should we keep going with it?"
I got a finance question. HADF or Vision, they've got their own funds, right? Their separate pods?
Yes.
So is, you're saying HADF wants to do 30, or Vision 2025 wants to do 30?
Vision 2025 arm of that wants to do 30, or half, 31, 250, whatever that, whatever that number is, roughly 30. Now, there's itch in this, David. Just gotta give us some direction on where to spend it.
Give it to me. I'm getting mad.
It's the wrong itch.
All right, any other discussion or questions for David?
It's a two-month, five-month?
I think it's three. I'm pretty positive that time of the...
Two months.
Yeah.
Hey, choose five months?
Point five, it looks like.
One point five, yes.
One point five.
I think the total's about four and a half. I think honestly we'll get it done in five months, but it'll take five months.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal for the comprehensive plan by ISG for the city.
Second.
Motion on second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, at 62.5, well, I don't know, we need to include in the minutes or in the motion what we're gonna, I think that discussion will take place.
I don't think you can spend that money.
We can't spend the money for it.
Then Vision money, I mean, you're gonna have to pay for this, and hopefully Vision will make, HADF will make a motion to kick in.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
Any other discussion or questions? A vote? Monahan?
You had to go to my first?
Yeah, I went to O'Hara last time.
I don't know, but I don't like the motion.
Yes.
Randall? Yeah. Randall?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
And...
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're back. All right, next item is we got our appointments for the positions that would be open, that would be open, we will reconvene as the new council. So kind of run through those, we appoint, and then we approve as a council, basically, these appointments out there for the open spots. If we can do these, if we do these one by one?
I think so, because probably who you appoint will probably say, "Yeah."
And all of that, and we're all in our, everybody's in their position now, except for Person who's been appointed, so. First one, Ward one, at one position, and I don't necessarily make a motion, but I say I'd like to appoint Travis Keel to Ward one, Councilperson.
And what we look for is a motion to approve, and second, and then we vote.
I make a motion to approve Travis Keel appointment for Ward one.
Second. Discussion? All right, a vote? Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yeah.
I'll call on Keel. Keel?
Upstate.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
All right. Ward two, we've got two positions. First one, appoint Mark O'Hara. First position on there. If we approve, O'Hara?
Second.
Discussion? All right, a vote? Randall?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
O'Hara?
Upstate.
Keel?
Yes.
And...
And second position, Ward two, appoint Mark Monahan.
Motion to approve Mark Monahan for appointment to Ward two.
Second. All right, discussion? A vote? Randall?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Monahan?
Upstate.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
And Randall? Yes.
All right, and then Ward three, we have one position, appoint Arden Jones for Ward three, position.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion? All right, a vote? Randall?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yep.
Jones?
Upstate.
And Randall?
Yes.
All right. You guys are listening?
But the meeting's continuing.
All right, next we'll go and do off the boxes for each one. So just in this order, Travis, so thank you, and get these handed out here personally. All right, and with that, will they stand up, raise their right hand? We all do it at the same time, or we all...
Well, you all are gonna have to insert your position and name, so you're probably gonna have to do it re separately.
Okay. Just Keel, go right ahead.
You're up.
I think I get to say, I think you just get to stand and raise your hand and read your thing. There you go.
I, Travis Keel, having been appointed to the office of Councilperson Ward one, within for the city of Hartford and said state and county, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and the ordinances of said city, town of Hartford, and that I will faithfully and impartially do the best due to the best of my knowledge and ability perform all duties of my said office of Councilperson Ward one.
I, Mark O'Hara, having been appointed to the office of Councilperson Ward two, within for the town of Hartford, in said county and state, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and the ordinance of this, of said city of Hartford, and that I will faithfully and impartially to the best of my knowledge and ability perform all duties of my said office of Councilperson Ward two.
You have a couple more times, read it. I, Mark Monahan, having been appointed to the office of Councilperson Ward two, within the city of Hartford, in said county and state, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and the ordinances of the city of Hartford, and that I will faithfully and impartially to the best of my knowledge and ability perform all the duties of my said office of Councilperson Ward two. I can't just say what they said. Say my name.
I, Arden Jones, having been appointed to the office of Councilperson Ward three, within for the, and for the city of Hartford, in said county and state, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and the ordinances of the said city of Hartford, and that I will faithfully and impartially to the best of my knowledge and ability perform all the duties of my said office of Councilperson Ward three.
I, Jeremy Manning, having been elected unopposed to the office of mayor, within and for the city of Hartford, in the said county and state, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and the ordinance of the city of Hartford, and that I will faithfully and impartially to the best of my knowledge and ability perform all the duties of my said office of mayor.
We signed, right?
And then I'll collect them after the meetings for my files.
Perfect, thank you. All right, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn as the old council?
So moved. Second. Give it to him, and I'll say.
Monahan Jones. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now we'll open up our new meeting, new council, and we'll start with real call.
Okay, Mary Manning?
Here.
Randall?
Here.
Keel?
Here.
Monahan?
Here.
O'Hara?
Here.
Randall?
Here.
First item on the agenda. Tony with Hartford area sports and arts.
Hey there, everybody. I just wanted to kind of give everybody an update on the Sports and Ref Committee. We just recently had our elections. We've seen a huge, tremendous increase in support and participation from both of us, as well as our meetings. I got nominated as president, BJ Olson is our vice president, Norm Struck is still the treasurer, Dan Wagner is our secretary, Mike is representing softball, Tim Garing soccer, Ron Healy for baseball, and then Matt Evans has the past president, I'll be representing a member at large. So far, we've had a lot of success with the can trailer that many of you have seen parked up in front of Sunshine. Right now, we're probably raising about anywhere between $1,200 and $1,500 a year off that. The pandemic has increased that significantly. It's been empty probably once a week right now. We have, I don't remember the name of the company that's picking it up, but we actually have a gentleman that works there, is picking it up for us along the way back to work emptying it. With that, we're actively seeking for a second trailer, just as, you know, that one, they're kind of backed up right now, now that they're opening it all up to the whole public, so that trailer could be going for two, three days, and that timeframe, that fills about half a trailer, so. Our committee's been doing a lot of work to make sure that area stays clean, too, between the meetings where you should walk in the ditches, make sure that it's not getting wet, so. Other updates from the committee, we have a lot of excitement around the formation of the soccer association here in town. Tim Garing's been really spearheading that, we've been posting that on social media, real close, I think we're maybe, excuse me, maybe need one more member for, to actually establish a full board, so there's lots of excitement. From the Dakota Alliance Soccer Club, we have approximately 201 kids playing in their league, and that's approximately 141 families here from the West Central area, so that's gonna be Hartford, Humboldt. With that, at our last meeting, the board voted and approved to purchase and donate two large portable safety shade structures, approximately about $4,500 each. We came, we didn't say we wanted to present that to you, obviously we needed permission to have to donate it to the city. They're 31 by 31, and they're fully opening, about 961 square feet of shade, they have a water base, so it can be filled up. It's approximately 14 feet tall, their studies are showing that it reduces the temperature on the ground underneath them by about 30 degrees. This primarily for the north sports complex, where there's absolutely no shade structure whatsoever. They can be moved by the skid loaders, they're not permanent structure, they can be drained in, and a skid loader can pick them up and move. They have a five-year warranty, and they're rated up to 75 miles an hour for wind, as we know, it's pretty wide open, everyone makes sure they have something that will stay, that one's gonna take off like a kite. So I'm not sure if you guys are into making a motion on that at all, but we've, the board voted out two, primary, one which we have up there, but they could then be a situation up there so they could be used, so. Throughout the meetings, we've had a lot of people reaching out to us with safety concerns with the parks. As we said, soccer is rapidly growing, as we saw, the fields look great, we just got the nets, all got sanitized, they have new nets, all painted, the fields look all awesome up there, but there is a lot of kids now playing along that western border up there on the soccer, kind of right up next to the highway. So we wanted to propose maybe some type of fencing to go along that western border to help prevent any type of balls or kids just chasing the ball, not really annoying it, and crossing the highway. Second is the current speed right there on that highway is 55 miles an hour, is that a county, or is that technically some of the counties? So we got a motion with them to potentially reduce that speed limit. The shade structure, as we've already addressed, we had several PDA complaints, you know, we added the sidewalk last year out there, the sports complex has been great, but we have already gotten ABA compliance complaints with, you can't pass two wheelchair on that sidewalk. The storage shed, there's the current one that's right between the two fields right there, it's becoming overly full with the amount of participants. The softball association is, as many of you might have seen today, the softball association is, they're turning away teams right now, just because it's, we're getting overwhelming response. So we're curious if the city can potentially find a second shed, that smaller shed can be moved down by soccer and used strictly for the soccer association. There's also, the cross-splay football league has been in communication with, potentially expanding as well and using more of that northern border. Access for emergency personnel at the fields, I know last summer we did have a young lady that broke her ankle playing softball. The new rail ties, people are trusting it, that'd be hard for them to get out there, so I don't know, that's something with, with the plans are being assessed, how emergency personnel would actually get out to the field if there was something even more serious. As well as any, any chance of first aid kits or possibly, I know in fire departments there's grants for AED machines, so we've been looking into that to potentially get a couple AEDs for the city parks as well. so we've been looking into that to potentially get a couple of A D Ds for the city parks as well. Um, the trees are a great addition, I know they came up in our last meeting. If there's more that could be planted, if they could be planted on the eastern border, allowed to grow, while we're waiting for that, those fields to develop to where they can just be moved. Two years in the ground would, you know, help them grow quite a bit. Um, and I know we're waiting for this month on the completion, or to hear back, I think Teresa's, this month on the FEMA grant, um, which would be great for the concessions in the restroom. Um, so we've had a lot of people asking, and obviously we shared that, that got a lot of great response. Um, just some stats we pulled as a committee this weekend. In the last twenty-eight days, just over the, you know, on Facebook alone, uh, we've had an increase of six thousand percent on the people reached. Um, the board members have really, you know, taken active stance to try and promote it as much as possible. Uh, our post engagements are up a hundred and fifty-six thousand percent, which is roughly about thirty-two hundred engagements increase. Uh, and we've seen, you know, our, the page lights itself on that, um, is up ninety, over nine thousand percent. So obviously, we're, we're seeing, there's a lot more active role, we're seeing a lot of people share, be involved, and are excited. Uh, we shared the, the plan, the, the proposed for the sports complex, and that got a lot of, people talking about and excited. Um, other questions that were brought up at the meeting, if the FEMA grant falls through, what is the timeline and the city's position on what we're gonna do to move forward out there? Um, we've lost a couple tournaments, um, last fall with softball, we've lost a little bit of wholesale national tournament, as well as we're, we have a couple leagues that aren't, aren't offensive, being out there just due to lack of amenities and for safety. Um, and then the other questions are, if there's an estimated timeline on the completion of the sports complex as a whole? I mean, we get constantly flooded with these questions, especially as we're putting the information out. Um, I know we chatted with Norm who, I believe, is on the council since it started, Mark and Hugman that, cause since they bought the land up there, so. Um, you know, we're coming up, I think on ten years now since the last purchase, so. Um, other, other communities are really pushing forward, I know the city of T just completed four new fields with concession stands, just over, just over a two million dollar project. Um, and then Sanford, and just, just pitched out that they are expanding, adding ten baseball fields, ten softball fields, eight soccers, all with lights, the new stadium turf concessions parking, and that's gonna run constantly a fifty million dollar project. So we're, I know Baltic and Crooks are both releasing plans to develop sports complexes as well, so. Just trying to kinda, you know, we get a lot of people that are getting anxiety on that, so we wanted to share that as well. Questions?
I'm gonna jump back to the shade structures, have you seen?
I have not, though.
Okay. Yeah, I was just kinda curious, if we know, if we can get the schematics and get that onto Craig, so we can get a feel for what they are, where they're made.
They're made down in Springfield.
So. Yeah, I'm aware of that company.
Are you aware of that?
Yeah. I know that's the guys in, uh, in Springfield, they build big hoop buildings, and they build these for cat structures.
Yeah.
And I know because I saw them, the tanks that hold them down.
So he wants it to pass.
Yeah. We sell them the tanks that they fill with water and hold them down.
Sure. Doesn't matter, he's on a fixed income.
Yeah, it's good.
Those structures do have permanent bases, well, like we figured with the, the, that's gonna be taken over, so if they're having a water base, that way at the same time the city has major events coming up, it's cheap enough to put a bush tent, they can be dragged, moved very easily and reset, so.
And they're pretty slick, I've seen their videos where they have them in just huge winds, and they, they stay put. Put a really nice screen on the bottom.
They don't stay put, it's the tank's fault?
Not in the tank fault.
No, if it did the tank's fault, if they don't stay?
Oh, oh, no, never. Tanks just balance, as we like to say.
And you approved it, have you ordered that yet?
We have not, we were waiting for a city's approval, but we approved and passed it in our board. Uh, you know, but obviously we didn't have to go and buy something that, that anywhere that donated to.
This has come out of their, out of their money?
This is out of our pri, this is out of the city's.
Not out of the city's money.
This is out of our personal check.
I feel most comfortable with it, if we get a chance for Craig to review what it is and know what it is. Um, you know, if we make a motion contingent on Craig's. Having a chance to look it over and know what we're getting there.
Yep.
Are there motions on that?
How do you word that?
Let's see, something.
I think the motion, uh. I'll make a motion that, uh, the city accepts the donation of the two shade structures contingent upon Craig's approval.
Oh, that's a good man, he's smooth. Second. Man, I'll tell you what, he's ready to hold a lot of, a lot of time.
Give me another discussion.
I was here when they bought the.
You were here when they used to print these out.
I kind of felt, I kind of felt like.
When they had it, we were pressed.
Yeah, it sounded like a demon. All right, we'll vote. Randall.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Honahan?
Yep.
Yep.
Brandon.
Yep.
As to his con- comment about finishing the sports complex, we've discussed this, uh, I feel a gazillion times. If there's significant public support, we should probably put it to a bond issue vote, get the money and finish it. I think it's, you know.
You know, I want a sports complex, well, same time I want to build it every year, that's in the spring. You know what I'm saying, like, there's budget time, and then there's the winter time to plan, and then there's springtime. It feels like we're kinda behind eight ball on that, but I agree, it's, that's, that's the surest way to know whether.
It is. It is, if, I hear you, Tony, if then, if the city, if the support is there, maybe it's time. We say let's float a bond issue, and if it's three, whatever it is, is it three million, is it four million? Whatever it is, let's see if the support's there then.
How do you balance, how do you balance the communities' desire for it versus the, community's probably the wrong word? There's a bond issue that the citizens of Hartford are gonna pay for. The people in Crooks with flight football will not. Granted, they'll come to town and they'll spend tax revenue, but that's two percent of a tank of gas, or that's two percent of a pizza. But a three million dollar bond is gonna get hung around the necks of three thousand Hartford residents. Not gonna get hung around Humboldt, Crooks, Baltic, Sioux Falls, nobody. So that's, that's the ten year stroke. That's the balance, that's the, that's the piecemeal.
The question I would be then is, is it possible to explore other options? Um, Sioux Falls just released an article, I think today or yesterday, um, they're building new tennis courts up by the Tormar Park here, where the city is sold the, the park essentially to the group that's doing the development with the understanding to admit that contract is being donated back, or that we should alleviate the tax, or the, or the tax burden on the city. I know within the cities that I'm left to is the maintenance of the, of the facility itself. I don't think with the support that we've got, and the people have approached us, just in the short time I've been a part of it, on willing to donate and to complete this, I mean, it, it doesn't even be a state of the art complex. I mean, what you said, we're three thousand, we're a community of three thousand, but we're turning away tons of tournaments, exposures, as far as for economic growth and bringing in a tax, I mean, I mean, it's one of the only things, I mean, I have an April Sunday in town, I can't, if there's nothing for him to do in town, but, I mean, that's, we really do lack sources of entertainment. I mean, he's played sports, we're a very sports-heavy community, I mean, soccer and softball win everything. You know, it's one, two things, yeah, but they're responding, a lot of footballers are right out there. So, you know, I mean, I think that, you know, I know there's other, there's other avenues to approach, but I feel, I don't wanna get, I don't, Hartford, I don't want to see Hartford left behind, but the other communities surrounding, you know, we're already a high tax for, uh, community as it is. So, I mean, there's a lot of, on the consensus of why come to Hartford? If we can get something like this moving forward, we will create that excitement. So it's moving forward, it's gonna help downtown, it's gonna help develop this business quarter coming down western. You know, it's gonna help get a lot of people out to there. Um, it's, I mean, you're gonna do it, it's gonna make your kids happy, and you all have kids.
I think too, I think it's, um, I think over the last ten years, and even more so especially over the last five years, it's, it's moved from, in my opinion, from a luxury to a, we're a, we're a community of three, thirty-five hundred, moving up to four thousand before we know it, that, we don't, we just don't have a lot of space for, even just for practice, for, for all the things that happen just internally right within our own community, so. To me, I feel like, you know, you mentioned Tony, it's, it doesn't need to be a state-of-the-art facility, but it.
But it needs to be functional.
And I think, um, I think now is as good a time as any, and we talked about some of the donating, you know, there's some, there's some bid rules that, that we would run into in some of those cases, I think, but, um, but there are some, some things where we can put it out for bid, and, and if people wanted to bid very low, you know, some contractors wanted to bid very low and, and basically donate some of that, that, that opportunity's out there for them to do it.
I know, I know the interest is there, we, we have people still constantly contacting, I know that there was a lot up front when this first passed, and was turned away, um, you know, and, I mean, there's still people there, especially with the commit, the committee that we have in place right now, and the involvement, and, I mean, social media's made it so easy to get messages out now, and it's spread it, and we're, we're becoming younger community. I mean, I see it on Hartford Avenue, since there's a thousand people, I see it, I'm set up for T-bone, seems like I really, so, I mean, there's, it's, the community's getting younger, and there's gonna be a need for it, so. I don't think getting the donations and getting that to a levy or tax burden, you know, I, I don't necessarily want to pay more taxes too, but I know that we gotta do something to take care of the community so it doesn't die out.
You know, Sioux Falls Tennis Association is gonna fully fund the project before it begins.
Yeah. Craig?
I just wanna, I'd love to see it done too, um, just wanna remind you, we've got some heavy projects out there. We don't wanna get into buying, or we spend our money out there before we do a sewer plant, or we do Western Avenue, and where they end up coming up to a, where we have to bid them out, or go out to the, vote the people. I'd hate to see the sewer plant get shut down because we have to go through voting people on it, and we end up, taxes go, sewer prices go up, and we end up having to, we lose, we don't have money for sewer plant, town's not gonna grow, so, gotta keep that in mind, I mean.
What's that called, Teresa, the debt ceiling or the bottom limit?
Debt limit.
What do you know, right off the, Karen, by the way, was right off the top, her as well.
I'm just looking at it. We're right now, we're right at about forty percent of our debt limit.
Forty percent of our debt limit?
Yeah.
So what's, what's a dollar amount of the other sixty percent?
Thirty-nine percent. Huh?
What's a dollar amount of the other sixty percent, you know?
We have so.
So, it goes by the city evaluation, right?
Right. So, we're allowed with our five percent debt limit, about thirteen million, wait, wait, we are allowed thirteen million, we have just under, just under five million, four point seven. Yeah, so we're at thirty-nine percent of our debt limit.
We got debt that's gonna be coming off too, right, that's on that, kinda sewer plant evaluation, right, revaluation?
We do, and I was looking at that, next year we have some debt coming off, but that's really only about two hundred and ten thousand. So, cause we, we're the last year of payments, so they're very low.
What year are they planning, uh, interstate?
Twenty-five.
Twenty, twenty-five.
Twenty-five. We're gonna have to have something done with sewer plant by twenty-five, I suspect, something, two million and fifteen million.
Maybe more than two million, I betcha.
Well, depends on, depends, just depends, put a two million dollar band-aid on it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Tony, you mentioned some of the other, like, and if you go back and repeat those, so T just put it in a complex.
They just built, they did it in three different phases, their second phase was their largest phase, I talked to Kevin over there. Um, they just completed four diamonds, added concessions, you know, really gave it the aesthetics, and it was just like two point one, two point two, you didn't have the exact number of them, so.
See, and that's part, right, because the numbers we've been hearing in the past have been, have been much higher than that. Much higher than that. We were talking million dollar field, and they did four fields and a concession stand for two million dollars. I don't know the numbers we've been getting in the past that could be accurate. But I think we can, uh, I think we can get this thing done for a lot cheaper than talking about that length of numbers, than what we think.
What Sanford's, what Sanford's proposed with their ten baseball, ten softball, eight soccer, all the parking, everything has lights and concessions, each complex has its own concessions, and it's that new state-of-the-art turf that comes down to just, just over two million a field. But we, like I said, we don't need the state-of-the-art facilities, I mean, we've, BJ's met with lighting companies on, on how to bring that, that cost down and what the options are to be energy efficient. Um, you know, I mean, there's, and there's a lot of different ways to look at it and to get it accomplished without having to necessarily go to a bond. You know what I mean, so I mean, that, I'm, I'm not here saying, hey, I think the city just needs to drop eight, ten million dollars, but I think we need to, the momentum's there, we need to pick it up on the momentum and push forward with it. I think that's the easiest time to get the support behind it, the way we got the demographics in the town right now, and the way, you know, like softball, just turning away, they just released, a press release today, is they're turning away, and I mean, we can only turn the people away so many times before they stop coming asking. So, I mean, I know we did lose quite a few teams for the, we had Kansas Jimma return it this year, just because, you know, they enjoyed it, but there's a lot of facilities and amenities here, currently. So, I mean, I umpire up there, I mean, I'm seeing that's, that, I was thinking more pushing the shade up there.
We've had a big agenda, I don't think any of us here disagree with the need, you know?
Right.
Um, so I guess I would just like to end it, but if you guys have a proposal, an idea, then get it on the agenda, get it, something we can see ahead of time, and start coming up some ideas, that's my opinion. We're gonna have financial, I mean, what is a completed field to you? Cause a completed field, to me, might be two million dollars. It ain't, but.
Right, we've, we, like I said, we've had a lot of the interest in baseball, so, you know, the, as you saw at the J C A's, you know, that we did, those other two fields are gonna be set up, would be potentially set up as multi-use, so they have the ability to host baseball as well as softball. Um, they're gonna be a little more studier than what's there currently, um, but, you know, we've, over the ten years that, like Norm's been a part of it, we've budgeted this out several times, and our numbers have been ten to fifteen percent of what's been proposed by engineers, and they're more realistic in what, you know, the communities are doing. Um, let alone, I mean, if we can really hang the hat on the community coming involved, I mean, I think there's a lot of, if we can get more people involved, that's more of a feel-good story to go before, especially the last two years we've had going on. So, I mean, I think there's a lot of ways to draw it up, or we can avoid the bond issue per se. But, you know, I know we've been told in the past that that's not possible, that there's too many, there's legal limits that come into play. But, you know, I mean, there's gotta be openings when the tennis association label pull it off, and there's, you know, there's other communities that are doing the same thing.
You shared a lot of stuff that's tangible, and stuff we can work on the fence.
Yep.
Talk about the speed limit out there, A D A compliance is, now maybe put some bump up or something, there's gotta be a workaround for that. More shed, storage, things, that's all workable. Plant a tree farm, I mean, plant a bunch of trees out there if they're not already planted.
Well, that's, that was just brought up, if there's more than.
These are real tangible things, the FEMA grant's coming, project completion, you know, that's clearly an agenda item. You know, the numbers are exciting, but if you say there's a two hundred percent entry to increase at an H eight sports complex meeting, you go from six people to twelve people. You know, I mean, historically, the numbers have been slow, so, I, I don't wanna get all caught up in percentages of, you know, these, these are really some outrageous numbers. Percentages that you're saying.
Well, I think.
Those are close, they're growing by. But, uh, it's, I know the momentum is certainly there, but I think it is, it's worthy of getting it on the agenda and definitely acting on it. Um, we gotta, you know, we gotta third party, so to speak, that could look at some very historical, um, projects for sports complexes, and maybe come back with some different numbers for us.
Craig?
I will, uh, get ahold of the colony and work with them on, cause that river should be dropped now and out there, and it is dangerous to speak, so I'll, I'll work with the colony on that.
Especially the new soc, the new soccer field, I mean, it's ten feet away from.
You know, as far as the fence goes, I mean, we might be tearing that up, we'll put sewer in there, so we might just have to just take that one field. Um, we just flip the soccer, the soccer nets up, we just. nets up. If we just take them out, you'll be...
Or both sewers.
We would put something.
Something there.
Doesn't have to be...
Absolutely, absolutely. Find a workaround. Yeah, find, find a...
David, have you guys had a chance to look at the sports complex very much?
We've, we haven't seen it, but we haven't seen any of like what was proposed or anything like that. Yeah. But our sports and rec team would most certainly be able to put together the, they do the most economical fields to, we have intimate knowledge about the Sanford Stone, that's what it's kind of like. So, I mean, we can, you can, there's, the prices can be crazy different from, I would call it the Cadillac to the very efficient field that you get by, which is fine.
I agree. Let's get them done. I think it's exciting that, you know, just in East Hartford, we have state-of-the-art facilities coming.
I think, um, just to move forward with that, what I'd like to do is, um, to sit down with, with any one of you, put a little task force together, line up some time with, with David and Craig and any council members that would be interested in joining in on that, that's open door. Um, we'd set up a meeting time, kinda walk through a few of these logistics and, and start to brainstorm so we have something to bring back to the council as a proposal.
Great. Yeah, no, I, I mean, I understand there's gotta be the foundation structures for it to grow, but, you know, we, same time, we gotta make sure we have something to attract to grow in the first place. Thank you, thank you.
All right. Move to applications here, hearings and resolutions. First one we have is a seven oh five hearing, first reading award with seven oh seven, the rezone of the south path, a vacated alley and lots of two two five.
A little bit of background on that again.
So, a couple meetings ago, um, Jim Bartman came before the city council. He is looking at purchasing a parcel of land that's on the, uh, the northeast corner of Western and South Street. Um, it's gonna be right north of the fire station. We discussed that and he was looking at, um, putting up a shop there basically for him to store and work on his own truck equipment, nothing commercial-wise for other people and whatnot. Um, he originally wanted to rezone it to light industrial because that is a permitted use, so if it's rezoned to that, he could just go ahead as long as he follows our regulations and standards. There was some discussion with the council that they would rather have it see it maybe rezoned to community commercial. That way, um, in community commercial, he will still need to go forward with the conditional use permit and go through the planning and zoning board to look at his plan and have them okay it. So, he hands us back and would like to, um, ask for rezoning of, right now, so residential from the rezoning of residential to community commercial.
Well, we had this the first time either, actually the contract supplement to the purchase agreement where he's authorized to actually do that. We didn't have that the first time, so that's nice to see. I'll thank you.
Yeah.
We had it the first time from our, our...
Yeah, to show that Kevin gives us, no, unless I just put it in America, but I had it.
It's dated, the right day, but I don't remember seeing it.
It was in the, I was saying.
I make a motion to approve for trading award in seven oh seven. Discussion? Berman?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Haan?
Yeah.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
And Randall?
Yes.
All right. We got a seven ten hearing application for special alcohol beverage license for one twenty main events.
I don't see anybody here. Uh, Governor came in and filled this out with you, right, Karen?
He emailed it in, yep. Yeah, um, they're holding a Cinco de Mayo event out at the exit plaza out there and they would like to sell liquor drinks. So, he's applied for a special alcoholic beverage license to be able to sell out there.
For char?
For char, from three to eight, yes.
Come on.
And this is gonna be held, like I said, it's at the, on their parking lot, rural park parking lot. So, it isn't on a public street or a public parking area, so a special permit isn't needed, um, multiple past eleven PM, so. But he does need a special alcohol license in order to sell off his property.
I make a motion to approve the application for a special event for one twenty main. Right. Discussion? O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Berman?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yeah.
Come on in.
Yeah.
All right. Then we have first reading award in seven oh six, establishment, established and local park recreation board. Tabled this last meeting, we had a forum, but we didn't have a, a very full council, so we go to this one. We've got several discussions on this item. Some changes over the last several weeks or months, I would say, on this one, so...
There was change from the first one. We, we're literally...
Maybe get a combined board?
Yep.
Because there's certain things that park boards do, recreation boards, and just put it all together, but we're, we're gonna have separate ones. That'd be, but the functions will still be mostly advisory capacity, so.
Discussion questions or, or motions?
This first reading done this?
This first reading.
I'll make a motion to approve first reading award at seven oh six.
Second.
Discussion?
Question, anybody from the sports and rec team looked at this or is aware of it?
Yeah. We won't, we haven't talked about it.
We'd be looking for representation from your area. Okay. Berman?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Haan?
No.
Randall?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Daniel Harris?
Yes.
All right. Um, we've got the sheriff's report in our packet.
Damien provided his report. It was actually his birthday, so he was like, he's taking him out. He asked if he could not come to the meeting, so, but he said if you have any questions, comments or concerns, get ahold of us.
Is there any discussion on sheriff's report?
I thought his video was really cool. His, uh, Coffee with the Cops video. I thought, that was pretty good.
Yeah, and that's gonna be May eleventh. This will be the first one since the whole COVID thing hit, so it'll be at Snapping Ground at seven o'clock, I believe, or seven o'clock. It'll be out there.
He's more of our old deputy, you know? Is he in our resource office?
Up in Del Rapids, he is.
Oh, in Del Rapids?
Yep, he's a resource. That's where he went to after.
So, you know, I mean, I recognize him when he was pulling somebody over. I call that guy, somebody with speed.
All right, we're gonna move. All right, we got the Chamber in economics on another part.
Thank you. Um, my information is in the packet. I will say, it has been fun this week participating with Discover Hartford and going around and placing hearts all over town. Um, I have gone out today to see if some are still placed and there are some out there. Um, we're doing little teasers on Facebook to help draw attention to them and the purpose of the hearts are to drive business to the Golden Heart sponsors. So, if you find a heart with the name on, of the business there, go to that business and they'll give you a prize. So, that's pretty, uh, fun on that aspect of things. On the development side, working on a couple different projects, um, prepared information for tomorrow's meeting as I will be at MACE beginning tomorrow. Um, MACE is a conference for the Chamber. Last week, I attended, um, some economic development, um, conferences, um, as well as some of the, um, uh, council and the HADF members. Um, had a really good meeting with great life to talk about the envisioned twenty twenty-five program, um, and attended their ribbon cutting yesterday to continue to show them support so that hopefully they see that, you know, we are invested in them as well as they're invested in the community. So, hopefully that will come around, um, for next year with them in their budget process in October. And that is my update.
All right. Questions for Amy? Thank you. You got an engineer's report? Nathan?
Trying to be pretty quick here. Um, so, a couple previous agenda items that we have there, design standards were probably sixty percent of the way through. Got a couple additional sections, but, um, we're gonna work through those and have quite a few comments with a lot of recommendations that we're kinda, Craig and I are gonna sit down and kinda go through, um, before we decide exactly what we wanna do. Um, uh, project updates, Westman is phase four is continuing forward. Uh, Westman is phase five. We actually reviewed those plans, delivered those to the developer last week. Um, plans and comments, and we're gonna sit down tomorrow morning. Uh, we actually have to sign off on the plot book. They're gonna come in and we're gonna actually go through those comments to kinda discuss that. Um, see what we wanna do on a couple of those items. And I know there's, there're gonna be a couple of questions on that. Um, NAP's letting phase one, two punch list items. Kirk, phase one punch list. Um, advanced better than layer was distributed GIS. Um, actually, we think we'll have that up and running sometime next week is what we're talking about, Michael, or something. Um, which is good. And then we had a couple, just a couple plots that came through, uh, as well. And on the wastewater feasibility study, as I said, they continue the meetings, have meetings tonight. Uh, we have meetings tomorrow, um, tomorrow morning to go through some more, um, additional on the technology side, but also reviewed AD kind of facilities on that April twenty-second, twenty-third whirlwind. Um, uh, you know, we looked at a lot of different technologies. You can see those there on that second page where we saw Aramon, we saw Lema, we saw, um, Huxley was a very, your typical mechanical, large, um, oxidation ditch put in a pretty, pretty small spot, actually. Um, really neat plant there. Huxley, uh, didn't actually go to the SBR, um, but they had actually seen one before, in particular the Nitracs and the, the Seater system as well. I think, uh, also looked at some lift stations, um, just on newer designs, newer pumps, standards, things like that. Um, some, some innovative things. I think we probably eliminated a couple, um, that we don't really think fit very well in, in this application. Um, I think we have kind of, if, if it was to stay in the current location, kind of an option, kind of identified what would, would be a potential there. And then the relocation, we've got a couple, I think, technologies kinda still evaluating right now. So, um, getting a lot figured out, uh, but it was, it was really good to see all of those and just hear from operators on, yeah, those stupid engineers put this there and we shouldn't have put it there, you know? But just really, I need to hear, um, plenty of that context of exactly what they thought and, you know, the issues that they experience on daily, uh, day-to-day standpoint. Sludge Judge, was that actually was done, correct? Good. And you have, oh, you got the initial findings there. I know they're gonna finalize that report, but, um, you can see some in the north and south iteration cell, which you typically expect. That's where your primary influence coming. Um, and then overall, uh, we're gonna continue those regionalization discussions and then we'll kick off some of that discussion tomorrow, so. Any questions on that report? Any?
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Then we also have a, um, bridge report in there from Stockwell. And we've got an action item in here for seed estimate, uh, for seed window. That's looking like it's going to be passed, uh, gonna be passed here soon, so.
So, this is for reseeding some more on Vandemark. There are a couple properties along there that the contractor actually did seed a couple times, did not come in either time. The seed window of May, window of May fifteenth is coming up here. The contractor's been contacted. He doesn't seem to be taking any action, so, um, Stockwell's got ahold of Shamrock Properties and, um, asked them to give a call as far as going in there and having a local company seed it and take care of it and see if we can get something established for those property owners. Um, this total seeding hasn't been paid out to the contractor because we knew we had these problem areas. So, what we retain and haven't paid out to the contractor, we would pay to Shamrock Properties if you guys approve this.
Make a motion to approve the Shamrock property management to, uh, resolve the seeding problem on Vandemark.
Second. Discussion? Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yeah.
Randall?
Yeah.
Randall?
It's Dean.
Keel?
Yes.
Daniel Harris?
Yes.
All right. Craig, your report?
Uh, just a couple things I had. Um, there is a steel grant out there. Again, I'll be getting that filled out and sent in here this week or first part of next week. It's due, uh, June first, so I'll get that in. Um, I'd like to also thank, uh, Jerry Price and the scouts for doing the rock work down here in the Century Square. They did a really good job down there. Um, and then also, uh, thanks for Live Bank for their portion of the, parting with the trees out of sports complex, so. Trees have all been planted except for the crab out the trees. They'll be planted, um, end of this week. He thinks the trees are planted on Friday, so can apply with them. That's all I got in the report. Besides that, sit there. If you have any questions?
I know Craig, you and I talked about, uh, I thought you and I talked about, trees down on the waste, our grass dump. We gotta be able to plant any trees up on that south side.
You probably, yeah, you'd either wanna go with, uh, you know, a pine tree of some sort or a hedge or shrub.
Kinda create a barrier, if you will.
Yeah. There was, they, neighbors down there, you can ask about putting trees on the other side, you're correct, and just to let there be more.
Yeah, right.
But I can, I can try to see if I can find some price on some little trees. I mean, it can take a while to grow, but we, you might be better off some lilacs or something that'll get it real faster growing.
Yeah.
Craig, where you can bring some numbers to us for...
Yep.
...the tennis courts or?
Yep.
Is that somewhere else in here?
So, uh, for the, to redo the tennis court, this be leaving fence in place, holding the concrete all around and everything like that. Um, the removal will be about nine thousand dollars because it's got rebar and stuff in it. It'd take us forever to, with our equipment to get it done. Uh, put the concrete back in is about sixty-three thousand. That's, uh, actually the quote we're, estimate we got was a pretty good estimate just because of the quantity, how much it is, but you're looking at about seventy...
Seventy something?
Seventy-two of these might, I look, I think they're gonna be pretty close to what it'd be.
Is that four inch, six, six inch?
Four inch, four inch. There's some rebar, something again. Like I said, there's rebar and we can find it through our locator, so that's where you can tell because it's not all evened out. Um, I did get ahold of, um, sports games, um, again, for the ones that we got prices on the tile floor back in two thousand eighteen. And back then, they were looking at to do the whole, the whole area, whatever, was about sixteen thousand, over sixteen thousand tile. Um, the tile had went up about a dollar fifty from already since then per tile. Um, they did send me out an estimate to do, um, just one pickleball court. Um, because the, uh, concrete that theirs actually could be patched up good enough to put a tile down on it. These tiles do get anchored down, so they're not gonna move. Um, priced on that, uh, is, uh, just a little over eighteen thousand to do one, just one quarter, so.
How many are there? Two, four?
What's that?
How many courts are there, Craig? Four?
There's two tennis courts there now, but this here is just for one court.
Just for one?
Yeah.
Well, that'd be a half of the tennis court, though, right?
It is, it's a thirty-four by sixty-four, so it's, it's basically, um, it'd take up one, one side, um, of the court, but it's, um, this is like official size, whatever. You could break that down or maybe do some revamp or whatever, because it sounds like they can play on smaller fields if they...
It's official size for a tennis court or official size for a pickleball?
This is for, this is for pickleball.
Tennis courts are sixty by one twenty, pickleball courts are twenty by forty-four.
Yeah, they're smaller, but, yeah.
So, so that quote would do twenty-five percent... So that quote would do twenty-five percent of what we have. Not fifty percent, do twenty-five.
Yeah, we'd only do, this is only thirty-three hundred square feet where you're looking at sixteen thousand square feet on the whole thing. And this is the thirty-four by sixty-four. That gives you five feet, I think, on the sides and ten feet on the ends, just to say you got some room to run if you go off the court after something.
How many square feet for again for the tile?
This one here is thirty-four by sixty-four, and that came to thirty-three twelve plus some, so it's installing, yeah. So that'd be the tile would be, like I said, tennis court was one hundred by one hundred and ten, and that was, they're looking at sixteen thousand two hundred fourteen tile.
I mean, I think it makes sense to, if you're going to have the tennis courts, you can, you can have a tennis court, you can have a competition tennis and then pickleball all in one court. I think it makes more sense if we're going to do this, it would allow more people to play at a time and more ages of people to utilize the park and the courts.
Could you one entire half?
Yeah.
So at a half, you're probably going to be looking at.
Because all you do is just the markers are different.
Yeah. So, yeah, they'd be painted different or different colors or whatever for them. So you're looking at with a half one, you're at, I mean, a full one, you're at sixteen thousand top, sixteen thousand two hundred fourteen tile. And you're going to want some footage past it. So the same thing, if they run off, they got room to get out, you know, on rounds or whatever, without stepping off the tile right away. So you're probably looking at close to nine thousand, ten thousand tile yet, and they are four dollars and thirty cents a piece.
You're, so that, that wasn't the price, that was the number of tile?
Number of tile.
Oh, I thought you were, I thought that was the price. That's the quantity.
Actually, when I looked online, I was looking at some tile, I thought they were five, over five dollars a tile. So he quoted me four dollars and thirty cents per tile.
So even if we tore it out and replaced it, we still have to strip it. Any idea what it would cost to paint it, surface that?
You, I think there's a special surface you'd want to do. I mean, you could just paint it, but I don't know what surfacing. I think surfacing was, last time we did was probably back in the mid nineties, early, late nineties. The only thing with surfacing is that it can bubble, you know, some moisture and stuff like that gets into it.
That's what's on there now, isn't there a surface on it?
There's a surface on it, yeah. It's been pretty worn, beat up and that stuff. I want to say that was close to forty thousand back in the nineties, ten dollars. I'm going to look it up. I mean, I can get prices on that, that too. That's not a cheap stuff.
Well, I'd like to see something solid that we can move on, either act on it or let it stop talking about it. So I would propose two prices, one to do it in tile, at court, an actual proposal.
Okay.
And with the three different options, as you mentioned, and then an actual removal, replacement with a finished surface on it. And then you can let the public know that this is going to vote. If they feel strongly about it, they'll show up. If they don't.
But it's instead of a, instead of a complete removal, Travis, what about a, take the old surface off, patch the holes and the cracks, and then re-surface?
Or if somebody come look at it and see if they think it's, they're doing it.
I just think there have to be three.
Sure.
Rip out, rip out and repore, patch what you got and put a surface on it, and tile.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yep.
Everybody's happy. Three-legged stool.
Some locked in porch.
Not you. Everybody except Mark is happy. This Mark, Mark two. That'd be one, two, three, yeah.
That's good.
Nothing, I'm just flat babbling.
Anything else for Craig?
That's great. We've talked, we've talked street sweeping for a while.
It's open tomorrow. It's going to rain.
I don't see it in here.
It's in there.
Oh, yeah. It was not out last week, that's what it was. It's not going to rain for a while. Maybe tomorrow.
There's a slight chance tomorrow. So if it is, we're definitely going to be out with it. Otherwise, we just can't find time with, to water anything, go on street. It just, we'll try to get that, with, with these trees. It's just busy, so.
We have another question. I'm sorry. I said, I talked long enough, I'll take a moment. So we give money to downtown Hartford. Downtown Hartford buys streetlights. We install streetlights. We maintain streetlights. I even heard you were working on them today.
Putting man.
Decoratively, like not trying to get the solar to work on. So we inherited those back as a city. They're our responsibility to maintain them.
And if you remember last fall, when they wanted to bring the baskets up and I had a deal, kind of worked out with them to water them, and decided that the city was going to maintain them.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I tried to push them off.
So as I look further down the agenda, I'm just thinking.
It's the same, like everything that we work on or inherit, kind of.
Right. They look next, the battery look next. They do.
He did have his safety harness on.
Wasn't attached to anything, but.
It wasn't.
I like to wear mine around too.
All right. Thanks, Craig. All right. Karen, anything to add to your part?
Standards stuff, so if anybody has questions.
All right, no. Thank you, Karen. And Truce is your partner?
Just a couple things I'll point out quick. Summer health, our dump site is covered. We're still looking for another public works assistant and another assistant for the park rec. If we don't get another one of them hired, both will be okay with that. I mean, we can still move forward. Craig's got two guys. We can get by with that and we can get by with one assistant with the park rec. So we'll still move forward. The pool so far, and we have hired every applicant that's come in, but we have six guards. And luckily last week, we had Adele apply for an assistant manager because there's no way Amy can work every single shift, seven days a week. So we do have an assistant manager hired. We're still looking for more guards. We usually have nine and we usually have two assistants. So we're looking for more that way. Amy is contacting all of the guards and assistant managers and trying to figure out when exactly they can work and when they can't. My only worry with our guards is when I interviewed them, when I interviewed them, several of them had commitments in the summer camps, ball. One's got another part-time job. So I'm hoping we will be able to, be able to fill as many hours and days we can. But we'll hopefully figure out this, that this week, and we may need to do some adjusting with these an hour, but we'll keep you posted on that. And we'll continue to keep looking. So that's where we're at with our summer health. The GFMP, Randy Kittle with GFMP is going to be out tomorrow. And we're going to go through, we submitted a grant for the bike trail. So we're going to walk through that and show them that. Unfortunately, I did get an email just yesterday from Wellmark, and we did not get that grant for that same trail. They said they had a hundred applicants and they were only able to fund fifteen of them. So stiff competition. So we'll see if we get anything from the GFMP and then go from there as well. One other thing, insurance quotes. We had talked about last fall, getting insurance quotes this year. That's still our plan because I want to go out, I'll start looking into that so we may get some figures before budget. So, okay. And the last thing, I just received yesterday, talked it over a little bit with Tom, but the municipal league had sent out some information about medical marijuana ordinance. You know, that's coming up. It was approved. It's supposed to be effective July first. You know, it's effective July first, the law, but the state has until the end of October, October twenty-ninth, in which it actually set rules and regulations through the state. So the municipal league has sent out basically a stamp, a draft ordinance that they are encouraging municipalities to pass. It basically says, we're going to not issue any licenses or anything when July first hits. We're going to wait to see what the regulations that the state comes out with, and then we are going to tweak our own ordinance around that. Because once the state sets their rules and regulations on it, we can, you know, in essence, be a little more restrictive if we want to. We can decide how many licenses we want to issue, the days and times and operations of this different thing. But until we get that information from the state, you know, we really can't set anything, you know. We'll, we'll enact something and then if it doesn't coincide with what the state does, we'll be repealing it or whatnot. So they are encouraging municipalities to do, pass a temporary ordinance in which to basically say, we are going to wait until we, the state puts out the regulations and then we'll adopt our own from there. So with that being said, I've talked to Tom a little bit on it, the kind of procedure for enacting this temporary ordinance is that we have to have a joint hearing with the planning and zoning board. So the planning and zoning board and the city council would meet together. You got to have a ten-day publication notice for this, and we got to get this all. Then we've got enact this ordinance, this existing ordinance, and then we've got to have it pass before July first. So that being said, we're looking at having a special meeting with the planning and zoning board, probably May twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth. Like I said, I'm not approving anything now, but I want you guys to take a look at your calendars and see if we can do a special meeting in there that Monday or Tuesday. P and Z's got a meeting on the twenty-fifth. You know, maybe we can meet quickly before then.
Twenty-fifth does not work at all for me.
Does not work at all for you. Monday, the twenty-fourth?
Probably other time.
Wednesday, the twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth works.
That works.
That works for me.
Wednesday, twenty-sixth work? They were the regular time?
Yep.
Regular time at seven o'clock? Okay, I'll get ahold of the P and Z board then tomorrow and see if we can get, you know, at least a majority of them and get that on board and we'll get something set up and I'll let you know for sure. That is all I have.
Question for you regarding pool. Apparently the, this next wave of COVID is affecting kids more than adults. Is that true or not? But I assume we're going to, the same COVID restrictions in place.
We talked about it and I've talked with Amy, the same safety protocols. We're going to have the screenings there, the single file lines, the signing in. We're going to spread out the loungers, keep up the disinfecting and sanitizing. Yeah, we're still going to keep the same safety protocol. Probably do. Well, the only thing we've really changed since last year is that last year we did restrict the capacity to fifty percent, and we took that off this year, saying if people are comfortable coming, they'll come. If they're not comfortable coming, they're not going to come. So we've never hit capacity most of the time anyway. So I think we're.
At the pool?
Yeah.
Never hit capacity?
No, not most. I mean, on a real hot day, we will, yeah, at times. But I mean, most normal days we won, yeah. Yeah. So I mean, but, but yeah, we've talked about, yeah, same safety protocols in place.
Ten thousand kids. And they're all looking at each other. AM.
Anything else for Truce then?
Thanks, Truce.
Yep.
All right, we're going to move down into new business. First item on there is election council president. So if I remember right, there's a nominee for nominations and then we can vote on nominations. And after that, the vice president, and when it's mayoral appointments for official businesses act that. So let's open up nominee nominations for council president.
Nominate Aaron Jones for council president.
Second. Motion to second. Vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yep.
Jones?
Steve.
And Maron?
Yep.
Do we have any other nominations or are we going to motion to cease nominations?
Motion to cease nominations for council president.
Discussion? All right, vote. Randall?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yep.
Jones?
Steve.
And Maron?
Yep.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, council president. I don't know, nominations for council vice president.
I'm going to nominate Travis Keel, council vice president.
Second. Second from O'Hara. Discussion? All right, vote. Franklin?
Yep.
Jones?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
O'Hara?
Yep.
Keel?
I'm staying.
And Maron?
Yes.
Any other nominations?
Motion for nominations to cease.
Discussion? Randall?
Yeah.
Keel?
I'm staying.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yep.
Jones?
Yep.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Keel.
Congratulations. Yep. All right, next item on there, got mayoral appointments. Just a couple of these that we officially have to go through. And so I would make the appointment for official newspaper. It's all the same time. All right, so official newspaper, messenger for official healthcare facility, Sanford Health, and for official depositories, the things that we are working with locally and have relationships with as the city, we've got US Bank, Ohio Bank, Great Western, and First National Bank.
Make a motion to approve the mayoral appointments. Second.
All right, discussion. All right, we vote. Franklin?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yep.
O'Hara?
Yep.
Keel?
Yes.
Yes.
And we have tax payments coming up on parcel two, three, four, oh, four. Disabled veteran, I believe, is the tax payment.
Most to approve the tax payment on parcel two, three, four, oh, four.
Second.
Discussion? Randall?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.
All right, we've got review slash approve purchase agreement city between the city and HADF for last agreement. This came out of some discussion from the last meeting. So I know Truce had time, you guys have had a chance to work on this a bit.
Yeah, so the purchase agreement was drafted by Tom, and basically it would transfer the city-owned lots, lot three and lot four, and Swenson addition, that's like a sports complex, to the HADF at no cost. Basically, the two caveats in the purchase agreement that we talked about were, was that once land is transferred, agreement to transfer it, any sales at the HADF, the city attorney has to be involved with those sales, draft those documents, and basically look up for the city's interest. It's kind of the purpose of that caveat. And then we also added a paragraph about, we talked about the dirt, excess dirt that's currently being hauled off there. I've got three people that are still hauling off there. It gives them until the end of October to get that dirt off the property. Talked with Amy and Justin. They do have insurance to cover if, you know, HADF, if anything were to happen on their property. So I mean, liabilities covered there. If for some reason that lot three would be sold prior to October thirty-first, there's no written or formal agreements with these dirt haulers. We would just have to give them notice that you have to get it out of there by a sooner date, you know, whatever. Yeah, so whether it's, you know, you know, within the next thirty days or whatever. So we'll, there will be time to get that off, so.
The other thing, we've reserved the east thirty-three feet for the third's future right of way. Lot four is planted, the east thirty-three feet of lot four is attached to this sports complex property. So it continues to run north. So we kept the east thirty-three feet of lot three out of this purchase agreement, about the main city property.
Yeah.
For future right of way.
We looked at that and in order to do a future road at some point, we would need that piece of land. So we'll keep them that.
That's a good catch.
There always was talk about making that 66 feet in case we never picked up the property on the east side.
Yeah, we've talked about, I mean, normally, you know, where the middle line is, you get 33 feet from one property and then 33 from the other. So when we plotted out lot 4, that's what we did. We saved that 33 feet, hoping that when the property to the east decides to develop or come in, we would get that extra 33 feet from them, but.
So really theoretically, that road would never go in until, I forget the property around the east, but until they've dedicated 33 feet, that road would never go in.
The Wintersteins.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I suppose you could put a driveway in there.
Yeah.
How does that, how does that look? If you put a driveway in there, who would, well, let's just say it's transferred, let's just say the HAD sells it. The new property owner couldn't put a driveway on our right of way. They'd have to put a driveway on their property.
Right.
And then in the event the Wintersteins dedicate, or whoever in the future dedicates 33 feet, then you'd have your 66, you could put the street in, then you could assess whoever owns the footage on the eastern one. 2065.
Yeah.
Wow. And that's something I was going to say, but if they just keep 66 feet on the west, what do they have? 242?
Do we need a motion to approve that purchase agreement? I'll make a motion so we can approve the purchase agreement as drawn.
Second.
All right, discussion. O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yep.
No.
All right, we have petition for 12th Street improvements.
So the city received a street petition circulated by Don C. Verdine, and it's to do improvement on 12th Street, which is right away the city has, just right north of the building center. That's my guess, the biggest point you get. There's nothing in there now. This would run east and west. The petition area is from basically Western Avenue. And it would go approximately 300 feet into the Naps Landing development is the area that's on the petition that they're asking the city to review and possibly complete. I've talked just briefly with ISG, kind of gave forewarning that this petition's going to be on the agenda. So they've kind of given a little heads up to look at the area. You know, I think at this point, you know, the council can discuss the petition and whether, you know, you want to look at moving forward with this or not. No motions need to be made at this time. I'm assuming you're going to want to get a cost estimate of what this would be, how we're going to fund the project, if we do move forward. Make sure we have the, you know, actually the entire right of way we need for that. Maybe we'll discuss a little bit the utilities before we put the street in. So there's, if you want to look at this project, there's some discussion that needs to be made. But the property owners along there, all of them have signed the petition, so they are in favor of it. There's only one property owner, the property that is just right west of the building center. It was recently sold to, I think the property was out in Washington?
Washington.
Washington, so obviously there's been no discussions, no contact with that property owner. But everybody else has signed the petition. Definitely have over 55% of the majority of property owners in favor of it.
We're going to make a motion, we have ISG do a cost analysis and review on this petition to include any underground or utility work that might need to coincide with that project.
Second. Session?
Do you think you can have that done in the next meeting?
Yep.
What is that distance probably approximately down there?
So here's the, the height approach.
I get it, please.
Here's the level.
I've got about 300 feet.
About 300 from 1300 feet.
1300 from here to the room. Okay.
Can I ask you, anything special on that street that we know of off the top of our heads first? I don't remember all the terms, collector or anything like that. Does it?
It did.
It would end right there in your development, is that right?
Correct.
Does it move any farther, you kind of go around that area or something?
I'm just curious if it had to be, you know, whether it'd be oversized or not.
Yeah.
Because I don't know whether that's a truck route or not. I don't know whether that's, you know, who knows? So.
Would be quite a bit of truck traffic down to the building center.
That's what I think.
They'd want something that oversized, a truck.
Craig's talking about at least during the corner for like turning and whatnot and, you know, because they've got so much coming.
What do you think, Bill? Well, all I wanted to add is that we will need, alluded to utilities. We will need, if the council approves the project, we'll need block sewer along that road. The sanitary trunk line sewer extension is going in from Oaks Avenue West to Western. So that sewer is in, but we'll need sewer between Oaks Avenue and Naps Landing. I'm presuming that you probably were contemplating moving feet in the water in the Naps Landing, coming down 12th Street at some juncture anyway. So, but I just, I just wanted to, you know, bring that up. And then they're not a big deal as far as I'm concerned. I'm happy to accommodate any way needed. But through some quirk of plating, when we block the property, track one, block one includes what would be the north 33 feet of 12th Street. So I think, again, if the city does, council does approve that project, we'll have to have a plat for that 12th Street from, we'll have to replat 12th Street from Oaks Avenue to Western Avenue because right now it's 33 feet wide. We don't have enough right of way.
Right, because so when it got planted, you owned it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm annoyed at how that occurred, but it did happen on the other side of Oaks Avenue. It's just, it's just in the track one.
Just on track one.
That's, that's all I really have there.
Sure.
Yeah.
I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, so.
Yeah.
So we don't get that surprise later on. Maybe we don't have the, we don't have the room.
There's your other 33 feet again.
Yeah, there's just 33 feet.
There is, as part of that trunk line sanitary sewer extension. I know there are some access points for that sewer that are being located along that road between Oaks Avenue and Western Avenue. And there's a couple of inverts that you're going to be pulling there anyway. One to the east towards Naps Landing and one to the north. They're about 10 foot below grade, but still, anything, part of that. Or that would tie into that van that we've contemplated, so.
The engineers will figure all that stuff out.
Yeah, that sewer line is actually going to get removed basically from the post office because it was, we could gain some depth.
You're going down another two feet.
So yeah, so that's all we can get done as far as the, we're east over there of Oaks and between Naps, now we're trying to decide which way is best for the sewers, or to come to Naps or to come off of Oaks Street. So we're looking at that for elevation still, so.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Justin.
All right, I recall we got a motion and second. ISG, come back to that. I hope we've learned about that. We have a discussion already. Next one, vote. Yeah.
Sorry.
That's all right. All right, Jones?
Yes.
Mahan?
Yep.
Randall?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right, then we've got review of discussion cities on street parking regulations. A couple of verbiage items in there I really will get a look at.
Yeah, and Mark Mahan called me and kind of had some questions about basically our on-street parking for commercial vehicles, what exactly were our regulations? So we kind of went through it. You know, in essence, a commercial vehicle should not be parked on residential streets throughout town. It's kind of basically out states, but there are certain exceptions to that in delivery trucks, construction vehicles, garbage trucks, whatnot. There's a list of about 11 different exceptions. And one of them is that if a commercial vehicle does not exceed the maximum length, combined length of the tractor and the trailer of 50 feet. So basically, if it's not longer than 50 feet and it, and it doesn't exceed 18,000 pounds, it can park on a street. And Mark wanted to kind of revisit that. He thinks that verbiage is that it's got to be those two things together to make it not parked versus, you know, an or in there maybe to trigger it. So he wants to talk about that and revisit that a little bit.
What spurred this on is, I had a Mark at. There, what I, I have received multiple complaints from my neighborhood because what I believe, well, I know the guy, I don't know him, but he's a hot shot. You can go with that, you guys know what a hot shot is? There's a four-door, dually, four-wheel drive Dodge diesel pickup with what I'm guessing is probably a, it's got to be a 50-foot car transporter that's a dually. It's probably a maximum DOT, I think it's 108 inches wide. And when he parks, when he parks on Van Mark and somebody parks on the west side of Van Mark, I mean, it's, it's pretty sketchy. So like I said, I received multiple complaints about it. And I had Teresa look into it. I actually thought the ordinance read something that it didn't. But the reason I wanted it on the council is because the way me and Teresa interpret this, it's 18,000 pound gross vehicle weight or less than 50 feet.
Yes, you get both those things away, it is.
Yeah. Which is all well and good, because right now he's, he's well over 50 feet in length. He's probably under 18,000, but he's well over 50. But I got to thinking, if he just wanted to be spiteful, he could have a trailer in the street. And then they probably are both under 50. They're both probably under 18. And now they probably take up more room because they're on up. And then I really let my mind wander. And I thought, all that my daily driver is under 18,000 pounds as a power unit. So I could probably unhook that, verify that it only weighed 17,500 pounds. It's well under 50 foot long and I could take it and park it in front of my house or Arden's house or whoever. And I, you know, it just, it opens up. I don't know what the solution is, but like I said, my, my neighborhood would like it addressed regardless of what the solution is. But it's got to be a solution. I like to say it be a solution that you can't get around it by unhooking it and just going from, you know, 50 foot combined to two units that are both less than 50 feet. So, but I don't know what the solution is. But, and I know the last, when this was drafted, when this was drafted, it was targeted at a contractor who, same thing, neighborhood abused the city street, the neighborhood, and that it was drafted. And I don't want to, I don't want to draft another one to single anybody out. But it's something that needs to be addressed. And like I said, I don't know how to address it. And that's, I guess that's why I asked Teresa to put it on me generally.
Mark, if you let your mind wander far enough and I hook a triple ax toy hauler to my grand lawn box with commercials placed on violation of this ordinance, that'd be correct?
It's your problem. See, see that?
That's just that commercials are only 50 and I'm over 18.
That's, that's another thing though, because a trailer wouldn't have commercial, but a truck would. And that's another thing that's not spelled out.
Right.
So that's, that's what I'm saying. This, this ordinance was not, number one, I think the intent, I don't think it's written as what the intent was. And number two, I, I really don't like the idea of passing an ordinance for the guy that's got a commercial truck like yours and a triple ax with a toy hauler. Because, because right now, when the hot shot parks there, one house up is the guy with the fifth wheel camper.
Yep.
You know? So, and when the other guy comes home with his Dodge diesel, I mean, Van Mark is getting sketchy as far as traffic. And, and I don't even know whether you spell it out, that there's things you can't do on arterial streets that you can do on non-arterial streets. Because you think of Second Street, Van Mark, you know, Main. You know, in my mind, those, but I don't think Van Mark's 33 feet any, correct? I mean, that's not an over width road. That's just 33.
Yeah.
I think it's a 33.
It's clearly near, it's standard on your.
Like I said, I don't know what the solution is. Because there's, there's so many different variables.
Because really, this ordinance talks about two different, kind of talks about two different things. People aren't going to be parking a solid waste vehicle, dump truck, cement picks or wrecker. They're only there for a short period of time and they're gone. They're not leaving them there overnight. And that's included in this ordinance. That's really, I mean.
Well.
Yeah, but they're not leaving them there overnight.
But this, this truck sits there for days and days and days.
Yeah.
Because if he's not.
Hot shot.
If he's not hot shot and having things sit on that. And, and you can, I mean, they'll hold three pickups. That's how big that trailer is. They'll hold three pickups.
If I remember, we were trying to basically say that a semi truck can't be parked on a residential street in front of somebody's house, like said, every night. Mark can't bring home his milk truck and park it, yeah.
I can bring home, I can probably bring the tractor.
You can bring the tractor home now, you pointed that out.
I don't like that, no, no.
But I think that was the discussion is that we wanted some commercial vehicles, the Travis electric vans or whatnot, the commercial, they're not good for anything being parked on the street. But I think it was, we were trying to target the larger vehicles like that, semi trucks or whatnot. That people complain about it, if you're with traffic.
Right now tonight, when I came here, there's like a, it must be a Kodiak 5500 something or other with probably a 30-foot enclosed trailer. I don't know, it's a construction company out of California, I think. And he's, and he's right across from the fifth wheel guy. And if the hot shot guy goes home. And he's, and he's right across from the fifth-wheel guy, and if the hot shot guy goes home, it'd be, it'd be one car at a time through there, on Van Mark.
Yeah, it's twenty-eight foot of asphalt, so we've got thirty-one, twelve, per, per, inside curve.
There's a, there's just a kind of width restriction added to it all quite a bit. It doesn't, I get what you're saying there, Travis, about the commercial plates on the vehicle and bring that up, the toy hauler, but if you were somehow to be able to find that up too, and then just have a width restriction along with a plain description, would that, would that solve it?
I don't know either, Jerry, I really don't. But I don't want, you know, if you're honest.
What's our, what's, what's South Maine?
South.
The width of it?
You know.
South Maine, no, I know, I know, it's mean.
That's thirty.
We should all know that.
That's forty.
We should look at the end of it.
Thirty, thirty-one, thirty-eight asphalt, yeah.
Well, if it's narrower than that, we should probably say, if streets are narrower than, than a commercial, you know, if you put something maybe just that simple in front of that paragraph, maybe you solve it all. You say, but you can't park here, the street's too narrow.
But then, he's gonna take his vehicle, and he's gonna, like we talked, park it in front of a resident, then.
He's gonna unhook it.
But my, my, my street's not, no wider than, right.
True, you're right, most residential, don't see that one, you're right.
He'd have to take, he'd have to find it, he'd have to park it on Second Street and walk him.
Right, yeah, that's true.
David row, that's why.
I don't, like I said, I don't know what the solution is, I just wanted to have a conversation, get you guys thinking about it. I can certainly have all my neighbors that talk to me come down here and talk to you.
Only if they bring suggestions.
Yeah, they'll, they'll bring something, alright.
Campers allowed over eight hundred?
Well, we said, are campers allowed parked on the road?
Campers, they can be parked in the same place for seven days during the summer, but then they gotta be moved coming feet. Yeah, because boats, campers, trailers, they can be.
What's max, maximum trailer width, Craig, is it one oh eight? I don't wanna say it's one oh eight.
Yeah, I think it is one oh eight.
Without an over width.
Yeah. To be, yeah, they jumped it up to sort of fifty.
I'll, I'll bet that trailer's every bit of one oh eight, but.
Well, yeah, they moved it up, so it used to be like eight foot six, then they moved it up to nine foot.
Yeah, I think we need to bring this one back, listen to the justice.
But, so, so, if one oh eight, that's nine feet, nine feet on each side, that gives you ten foot of asphalt down the center, if everybody's rubbing their sidewalls on the curb. And, like I said, that's, if there was. Thank you, thank you, thank you. What's that? Come on. Oh, ain't there? You know, I'll call you.
He's hot shot.
He's hot shot. But I'm guessing the campers are on ninety-nine to a hundred and one. So, even if you could come up with a width restriction, that probably wouldn't drive it.
Yeah, I think they're all probably eight foot six, they're pretty close right in there, because of the toy hauler part, no? Because you can put two, I think they're eight foot and inside under the toy hauler.
Like I said, I just wanted to bring up a conversation, so. That's good.
Alright.
I think I see some answer from the president by the next meeting.
President Jones?
I'm gonna go start planting no parking signs around town.
That's why we, why we fix that deal is to start putting no parking signs, and then send people.
How's that sound? Then tape the sign for the next one.
Just food for thought.
Alright, don't have any for correspondence, then we need to go executive session for personnel, is there any other items?
I would like to talk about economic.
Personnel and economic development?
Yeah. It won't take much. I would have some.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Alright.
Any votes are safe?
I've seen it, it's a big agenda. Yeah. Make a motion with you.
No.
Oh, no. I made a motion, uh, forgot about it, I made a motion that Amy Seaver received a one dollar an hour raise, retroactive twenty-twenty-one, if need be.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Alright.
Any voters say?
Make a motion with you.
Second.
All in favor?
Teresa, I sent you an email with.